We needed the empty table.
Call the meeting to order and please rise for the pledge.
The United States of America and the children of the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, and created in us.
Okay, good evening, everybody. Welcome back. Roll call for tonight. We are missing Mrs. Custer. Everyone else is present. So let's move forward. Executive session announcements. I'd like to announce that an executive session was held prior to tonight's board meeting at 7:15 to discuss personnel. And that meeting will continue after tonight's board meeting with continuing discussion regarding personnel. Before we get into regular business, I don't have any forms for public comment, but would anybody like to make public comment at this time? Okay.
Okay, moving on to the approval of the minutes. We're asking for a motion to recommend the approval of minutes for June 13th meeting.
Second. We have a motion and a second to combine the approval of the board meeting minutes for 6:13 and 6:27, 2017. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay.
I move that we accept the high school accounts, the middle school accounts, and the cafeteria counts as presented.
So move. A second. Motion and a second. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
I move that we ratify the payment of invoices in the amount of $9,820,631.87 for June 2017 as presented.
Motion and a second. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move that we approve the payment of invoices in the amount of $2,814,197.88 for July 2017.
Second. Motion and a second. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move that we approve the treasurer's report for June and July 2017 as presented and file it for audit.
Motion and a second. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks, Patty.
Okay. Moving on to the report of the superintendent and action items. How would the board like to proceed individually? Any recommendations there from the board before I start with 8.1?
I'd like to make a motion to approve Section 8 for personnel.
So a motion and a second to combine 8.1 through 8.11. Is that correct?
Twelve. There's a twelve.
Twelve, twelve. Yeah, consent and approval.
Okay.
Any questions or comments on personnel?
Quick question. On 8.5, my question was, what happens when Mrs. Wolf comes back next year? Are we going to have room for her and the person we're promoting to her position?
We will. Actually, we're going to just fill that spot with the long-term sub. So that particular, is that correct, Daniel?
Karen Wolf retired.
Okay.
So that position is actually open. So we interviewed for that position and filled that. However, there is also an LTS that we're filling because of somebody on maternity leave within the reading department.
You want to say that one more time just for the board?
Correct.
Yeah. We have quite a few of them there, so.
Any other questions?
No questions, just a comment that I hope that Mr. Cooper serves well and comes back soon and safely. Thanks, Bob.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay.
Okay, business. We have business action items. Section 9. We're asking the board to approve the contract of GHN or General Healthcare Resources for overflowing staff needs and for support staff and a school psychologist. What I'd like to do is just, Dr. Harney, if you would, after reviewing this and having a talking with Dr. Harney today, there's something we just wanted to do, just make the board aware of under the explanation piece.
We just needed to add, next to support staff substitutes, we're looking for reliable support staff substitutes, not support staff in general. So this is a contract right now that we're using for potential psychological services as well as substitutes for our support staff.
If there's no objection, I'd like to combine 9.1 through 9.5.
Okay, motion and a second. And I'll just ask before we go ahead and vote on that, is there, are there any other sections that you want to speak to Dr. Schirker, Dr. Harney, before we go ahead?
Dr. Harney, I think that was the only one. We just wanted to clarify, you know, with our staff that we have quality and reliable people. We're not, we're not, we just not, it's about finding quality, reliable support staff substitutes when one needed. So we just wanted that clarification for the board. So thank you for asking.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions or comments from the board on this? Okay, so 9.1 through 9.5. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks.
Action items for education. We're asking that you approve the conference attendance item as submitted.
Motion and a second. Questions or comments?
Yeah, I have a question on this one as well. If I'm reading this correct, the conference actually happened during the summer back in July. So my question is, I know for field trips, we have protocol must be approved by the board at a certain period of time. Wouldn't that also be held the same for, say, a conference? I mean, I would think that there should be some kind of protocol that they must come to the board for approval before the conference actually happens, whereas right now, I can't say no to this. It's already done.
There is protocol that we ask our administrators to follow. I think this particular case was caught up at the year end of our school year. And given that the National Principals Conference was in Philadelphia, it wasn't, you know, we knew that we didn't, we wanted them to take part. In fact, actually, Dr. Ziger, Dr. Ravage and his team actually presented at the conference with Mrs. Williams, Mr. Siler. They were all part of that. So we wanted to support that, being local. So I felt that it was a worthwhile cause for both of those to attend because they were representing Potsgrove School District, oh, I'm sorry, on a national level. So, you know, we do our best with that. This came up. There was no doubt that Mrs. Williams knew she was late. I explained that to her. But I felt that the exposure that we got as a district and our administrative team at the national conference was worth the go.
Okay. I guess, Al, I'll just add to that, that I asked that question the same a few years ago because it even, I didn't even understand in particular why we were approving conference attendance. It is a part of one of our policies, and I don't know if that follows school code, but sometimes they're such small dollar amounts. I know there's other things that we don't see that aren't on here that are for bigger dollar amounts. But I think, I've seen it as well where it's after the fact, but I think we're just approving the payment. Anyway, I just wanted to, it seems like it comes up every, every so often.
And I'll just add, sometimes there are things that come up for our directors and our administrators that, something comes out last minute, like the IU comes up with something, or there's something that needs to be discussed at the state level or the national level or local level. And sometimes those things happen quick. So it's not, not always, we try to be as timely as we can. I think for the most part we are, but sometimes, you know, you know, I feel we have a good checks and balance in the process.
Any other comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, just like to turn our attention to action item number 11 under policies. We wanted, you know, in this summer, when we were in the process of getting ready to implement this policy, I know Mr. Nestor and his staff started to look at the policy and found out that the policy that we agreed upon was not the same policy that was in print. So to make that right, obviously in the board packet, you see the revisions in red, that's exactly, the red piece is exactly what we agreed to. So I'm sure you had an opportunity to look at that in the last couple of days, but I just, I wanted, as I told the staff, that has to come back here to the board so that you understand that, you know, we did, there was a typographical error, an error was made. We're in the process of correcting it. It did not, and Mr. Nestor, you can, it did not affect anything as far as the implementation. We just wanted to make sure that it was as we had discussed. That's how it was written. So that's why we're re-asking for your approval again to revise the rise of use facilities policy 707.
Okay, and I just want to point out now that we have it ready to go. The two, the two sections were the per-use rental rates, which we, oh, gosh, I don't even know how many times we went over them. But the other piece, which I think maybe is more important piece to concerned parties outside, was, it's in reference to in-kind contributions where outside organizations that make donations to the district or its programs in any way, the value of those donations will be taken into account when the fees are assessed. So if you have a $1,000 fee and you made a $1,000 donation, then it'll, the donation will go against the fee, which I, I think that was a great process we went through, and I appreciate that everybody in the administration agreed to put that clause into this new policy. So those are the two things, and the reason I'm explaining them is because I'd like to not have this go up for 30-day review again and have us just approve it tonight because it's been a long time coming. So with that.
I would suggest that, you know, arguably, you don't need to post it because it's a revision of a clerical issue, but what I guess the motion should encompass is that you agreed to the corrected version, and if there's a waiver of the posting period, I know you're allowed to do that in your policy, that the motion carries that we waive the posting period of 30 days.
Okay.
Yeah, that's the way we're moving.
Sounds like you want to do a.
So moved.
Revise your motion, whoever. Okay, great. And so seconded. So any questions or comments in addition on this policy? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
We had our JOC meeting last night, and it was kind of funny because I kept saying to myself, we had the meeting in August. I was like, oh, my gosh, it was last night. So, so it was a great meeting, but I just want to give you a couple of updates. We had our summer camp. It was a huge success. We had 155 campers. We had 140 last year, so it's starting to show the interest is there. One of the cool things we kind of talked about is the campers that enrolled in the rev up your, yeah, rev it up, build a go-kart. So it's kind of cool seeing the kids like all ride around in the go-kart. So, so the camp was a success. We had qualifying HOSE students. They competed at the national competition in Orlando. Students did an amazing job even though they didn't place. But this is a great experience for the kids to, you know, because they have to show the written part of it, and they also have to show the verbal part of it. So, so we're very proud of our students that attended there. The building is almost 100% and ready to go. We thanked the custodial staff because they did a phenomenal job of resetting the building for the start of the school year. Community dinner buffet is going to begin on November 6, 2017. And if you remember, we sell out so fast. So just kind of keep that in mind, and I'll be bringing updates on when we have the different theme dinners. The one kind of disappointing thing for me is our enrollment is up. We're at 586 students, and, but Potsgrove's only 143. So it's kind of disheartening to me to see, we really need to revisit what students we take at what age. It should, I would like to see it like Springfield and Upper Perk do. They take their eighth graders and they take all their ninth graders, you know, so then they can get an opportunity of seeing what we offer. So, so I'm kind of disappointed that we only have 143 at Potsgrove because I think the numbers could definitely be up there. So with that being said, I just want to give a shout out to what we offer. So we have automotive technology, biomedical science, we have carpentry, collision repair, commercial art, computer information systems. We offer cosmetology, culinary arts, dental occupations, diesel technology, early childhood education, electrical occupations, health science technology, heating, ventilation, and air conditioning, metal technology, protective services is where we had to hire a teacher because we had a waiting list for that. And our new this year is our sports medicine. So since, you know, it's not too late, if we have anybody from Potsgrove that wants to get a tour, we are going to do some programs. We're going to have some open houses. But I just think we have got to offer our students every available opportunity when they're in our district, whether, whether it's, you know, the Western Center or here or whatever we have. We really have to show these kids to make it a success. So, so, and then with that being said, any of the details, and we do have a Facebook page, and you can go to the website at westerncenter.org. And I would like to thank Lashy's and I here above for their continued support. It's really nice working over there. So, so there you go. That's my report from last night.
Patty, I have a question or two.
Sure.
The first one is, while I recognize that 143 sounds low relative to a total enrollment in the 500s, are you aware of the percentage?
You know, I actually did not ask for what the numbers were for the other two sending schools, but I will work on that.
I mean, I guess my point is that we might not be off.
We are off. We're way off.
Based on a percentage of our total population and based on a percentage of Springfield's total population, which is significantly higher than ours.
Well, actually, Springfield, I know Springfield and Upper Perk are pretty close. And Upper Perk is very similar to the size we have.
Fair enough, but I think it would be useful to know.
Certainly.
Those percentages. It would really demonstrate how far off we are, for one. If they've got 10% and we've got 6, you know, just as an example. Or maybe Upper Perk is just doing a better job and there's something we can learn from them. Maybe they're higher as a percentage.
Well, see, the one thing that I did learn from them is how they introduced the Western Center to the eighth graders and the ninth graders.
And then that was my second question to you. When you said bring the eighth graders, you mean take the eighth graders at the end of the year for a tour, and we don't currently do that?
Eighth graders, do we?
We did, we did, and I, we have done that in the past, and I, correct, last year it did not happen. And I think then what we did last year with our freshman class, we, anybody who was interested, we did that. So what we can do, I know, I know, I know we can do this for you, Mrs. Graham, so you don't have, we can find out our numbers over the years, what our enrollment is and how many kids we've had there. So, I mean, we can do that. I know Dr. Ziger can do that. So, I mean, yeah, do you have that?
I have a rough estimate from the figures that I got in the spring, if they're accurate from there.
Oh, we could, we can, well, why don't we just, I mean, unless you really want to, I mean, we can, I'd rather have accurate numbers, sort of give it a three-year window so we have an opportunity to really compare and contrast. Yes, Dr. Ravage?
I'll just jump in for the middle school piece.
Yeah.
It was two years ago, the entire student body went, because of the interest level, this last year, we inventoried parents and kids, and all interested students went over. I don't remember exactly what the number is, but I think we took, we took a bus load full, so 50 to 60 students who expressed interest went and toured through with our guidance staff.
I'm just going to leave it with this point. My point is, we have got to show all the students on one bus, this is what we can offer you. You know, because I don't think if they say, well, I might be interested, I might not, I'm not sure if I want to go, I think if we offer it, a big fun field trip, you know, the culinary arts can maybe, you know, show them little lunch, you know, or something. But I just think we have got to do a better job at showing all we offer. That's all.
Well, I'm all for doing a better job promoting and think that there's always room for improvement, but I don't agree with forcing students who don't want to go to visit the Western Center. There are some students on a track that simply doesn't intersect with the Western Center, and they're not going to go. And, and why would we force them? It's not a fun field trip for them. Maybe they'll see it that way because they get out of class, but, but, but the reality is that, that we should keep, there should be a way to get the kids who need to go, might want to go there without forcing the ones that don't want to go. That would be my only objection to what you're proposing. So I like what you did last year, but if our enrollment is down as a result of it, then there's got to be a way to make a break.
I would agree with Mr. Rabinowitz. That opens a whole can of worms, forcing students to go that really have no interest in that. Maybe one possibility, and I'm sure these guys, you know, have thought it through and are doing the best, best way possible, but one possibility would be for them, a representative from the center to come over and give a presentation in the order, you know, as an assembly with slideshow, and this is our different programs, you know, a month or two or whatever, prior to the field trip. And then maybe that would increase interest in people. Just a thought.
Yeah, please, we do do that, correct, Dr. Ziger?
This year, I actually met with Mr. Maritzin over the summertime. We're going to plan for him to come and meet with our ninth graders during pride period to do a presentation similar to that. So he would introduce the programs to all of them. We also encourage him, and they come out to our back-to-school night, they also come out to our dual enrollment STEAM night, AP night, they present there. They've presented there for like the last two years. So we've been doing a lot to actually market and try to get as many students there.
Do we do it for the eighth graders?
We do what?
To Patty's point, do we, do we have somebody come out to the middle school?
Their guidance counselor, when we go through course selection at the high school, we have the Western Center guidance counselor actually come out and support that.
But we don't have somebody from the Western Center coming out to the middle school and doing the same thing that is being done for the ninth graders a half a year later?
So in the fall, we're going to do a, all the ninth graders are going to get a, during their pride period, this is the Western Center, here are the opportunities. Then in January, the eighth graders get a meeting with art counselors to go over what course scheduling is like. And then they will also have the Western Center guidance counselor there, Candace. She comes and talks about the different opportunities that the students there also. That's not like a full-fledged slideshow, but that is a, here's, here's the opportunities out there.
Well, to Patty's point, she feels like we can do a better job of marketing to them before they get to the ninth grade.
Absolutely, we can, we can certainly do that.
It's just offering a worthwhile modification.
We'll continue to explore ways that we can strike.
I think we can, we can do that for you. And what we'll do is we'll look at statistical data first and see, see how we're ranking up as far, and then we'll look at ways to promote, promote the program in eighth grade and in ninth grade. And we, and I know we do it, and I speak, I say this because I know what I've did as a principal at Upper Perk, and we also promote it for 10th grade because sometime, you know, sometimes, you know, there's a two-year window where there's programs where there's a change of heart and a change of mind, so we have kids going out. So we would also do that as well. So I'll get with our middle school and high school staff, and we'll work, we'll work that out, bring some stats back, and make sure we're on the right page.
I had one question. I know we haven't had a chance to have it. Did the contract get resolved? Is that all completely done? And what were the final results? What were the numbers?
Okay, thank you, Patty. Moving on to new business. Do we have anything for new business tonight? Want to just go around the horn?
Let's call this something I've been meaning to bring up for the entire time I've been on the board. And, and it's every year at this time that it comes fresh into my mind, and I think last year I planned to, but we were a little distracted by other things when we came back last August. I speak of the method by which we communicate class assignments to our elementary primarily students. So there, once upon a time, we used to post the class lists on doors. People would know on the last day of school, people would go and look at the class lists. But then, for privacy reasons, we, we also published them in the Mercury, I believe, or perhaps the Santa Toca Post, I don't remember which. And, and then we stopped doing that because of privacy reasons. And we also, I think, stopped doing it as we went to the centers because the process of picking teachers may have been a bit more complex as well as a lot of moving parts within the elementary school. I'm not really sure. But what I do know is that I constantly hear complaints from parents who have come from other districts, and, and they always say the same thing, in the district we came from, the kids found out their class assignment on the last day of school. And then, you know, in the morning of the last day of school, the kids found out their class assignment, and they all compared notes, and then everybody felt, had their anxiety relieved about who was going to be in their class, or I suppose worse, depending on the class mix. But I just wonder why we can't come up with, with all the technology we have, why we can't come up with a methodology to, to provide that information before the end of school? I know the decision has been made about the class assignments before school is over. So I just ask you, Dr. Schirck, to, to consider this, not as a high priority item because the year is already done, but it's something to think about for next year. Is there a way to make this process go a little bit more the way others do it? Or is there a good reason not to that I'm unaware of? Certainly, one reason I know is that all the teacher selections haven't been made. So, so if you give an assignment at the end of the year, it might be TBD, right? So, so, so I recognize that, and yet. Yeah, right. And, and yet, at least 95% of selections are, haven't changed. You know, it would be my guess, or 90%. So I'm just asking. You don't need to respond to me now. It's just one of those low-hanging fruits. And honestly, I didn't even want to ask about it while my kids were in the elementary, and they are no longer in the elementary. This is on behalf of the parents that I constantly hear the same thing. And go to some great lengths to try and help them figure out which kids are in their classes. So, there.
If I can just add to that, one other thing that's always in conjunction with the class list is the school supplies of each individual teacher because a lot of times the stores have sales July, what have you, and if they don't know who the teacher's going to be until August, they have to wait until the last minute when every other family is searching for the same three-ring binder. So if they can know well in advance, then they can plan and leisurely, when things are on sale, get them as opposed. as opposed to fighting off the hordes, so.
I just had a couple of quick announcements for athletics, I figured we'll go through them real quick. If you have a Pots Grove Middle School student that is interested in being a member of the eighth-grade football team, there are very, some very important dates that are coming up. Each player is required to hand in a P.I.A. double A physical examination form and an emergency contact form. Both forms are available in the Pots Grove School District website. I want to make sure, understand that the school will not be able to issue any equipment until after all the paperwork is submitted. So if anybody wants to be in the eighth-grade football, waiting until the school starts, that's not, you're past the date already. All right, the second thing is, anybody else that's going to be in athletics for the entire year, this goes spring and fall and Winter Olympics, Winter Olympics, winter sports. I think the Winter Olympics are coming this year, yeah. All right, there are two dates, you do need to attend one of the mandatory meetings. The first one will be held on August 17 at 6:00 p.m., it's at Pots Grove High School Auditorium. The second one is going to be on, let me make sure I got the right date here, September 6 at 6:00 p.m. in the middle school auditorium. You must attend one of these two meetings if you want your child to play in Pots Grove Athletics this year. Thank you. That's for the parents, the parents must attend, the kids, you can bring them, that's fine, Dandy. It's only about an hour long, you go through the little minutia that you have to go through and such like that. Answer any questions you may have. It's a lot of fun.
I'll jump in since we're around the horn. I just wanted, we, I know last year, the board wanted to have an opportunity to have a grand reopening of our high school. We wanted to have that in November, then we wanted to have it in December. And it just, things just fell apart contractually with our contractors to make it pristine enough to open it up. So we feel we're in a position to do that this fall. And I know Mrs. Bickert and I had looked at many dates of our busy schedule that would be at open night. And we did pick, originally picked October 3. And then through conversation with some of the board members, they thought that possibly having it a homecoming weekend would be a time to do it, when a lot of students are around, a lot of families are around. So I had an opportunity to speak with Dr. Ziegler, Mr. Durenzo, because I wanted to make sure that we could make this a fit, you know, for that weekend with all the festivities that take place. And they both assured me that it could be done. So we are going to change the date, and a reminder will come out for the board and our community. I just wanted to let the board know first, we're going to move that to Friday, the 29th of September. And, you know, more information will follow, but obviously, we're going to include, you know, past board members who were part of the original process, the current board, and people, you know, who, you know, had a piece of this, if you will. Invite them back for the grand reopening, we're going to set up some tours. And there's going to be a lot of things happening that night, but I think it'll, that'll be a good thing, you know, to see the action, see actually, see the high school in action. So I just wanted to tell you tonight, 9:29, save the date, and then we'll get more information about the reception, the ceremony, tours, et cetera, in time to get everybody out, if they so wish, for the game. So I just wanted to bring that up. Thank you.
I'm going to make one comment, obviously this goes without saying, we're going to make sure that the punch lists are done before the 29th.
I would like to also see if it's possible for the open house to maybe post something in the local paper so we could have alumni notify, because we don't really have an alumni page or anything. I think that would be a good thing.
We will do all that, we will use all of our media sources and social media sources to get this out. As I had told my immediate staff, I just wanted to get to you and let you know first, and then the ball will start rolling tomorrow. I just wanted to let everybody know that.
Dr. Shirk, we, I just don't know, so I just want to make sure that we've considered the proximity to the Jewish High Holidays when we pick that date. I don't know what the dates are, but I know they're usually somewhere around the end of September into early October, and before we get too far with that.
We will check that out.
I tried to look it up, but I can't get a connection.
Yeah. Thank you. If not, we'll be back again with more new business.
Somehow it was sticking in my head, you're going to need another day.
So we could stay with the 3rd, we just wanted to tie it in. We, the 3rd of October was our original day, maybe? I'm sorry. Yeah. Yeah, okay. Let me, let me give it some thought. Thank you.
I just wanted to say, I know, I know we said it before, but Dr. Harney, welcome to the table.
Happy to have you here. And I guess only Mason reads my emails about the dress code. But I'll try to send them earlier next month. Good shirt, Mason.
I like your shirt.
Thanks.
New business then?
I actually forgot one other thing I was going to bring up. I know Mr. Boyer was here a second ago. But I do want to commend our principals that actually had, and here comes Mr. Boyer on cue, he's going to come in for a second. As in, they had to meet the principals over the last couple of weeks. I understand a lot of different pictures have gone on for you guys, and you got to meet a lot of the students that are becoming into your respective schools and such like that. So I want to thank you guys for making that available for many of the students.
Well, before I do that, do we have any public comment on agenda items that came up now? Okay. Let's, second. Meeting adjourned. Thanks, everybody.